Good evening, and welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. It's 6:30 in the evening, and it's light, and it's wonderful. I also want to let everybody know that today is National Puppy Day. You know, news you can use. Let the record show that all the councilor members are here today, and they have, you have in front of you the minutes from the March 9th meeting, and do they meet with your okie dokie?
I would move to approve.
A second motion, second by Councilor Takeus. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, here, nobody's motion carries. Is there any visitor comment? Looking, nope, there is no visitor comment. Moving forward then, reports, as you can see in your agenda, we did have an audit report scheduled. There was an unfortunate traffic accident, as I understand, that the folks were not able to join us, and so that's moved to a forward date. So I just wanted everybody to know that. Under Mayor Report in the council packet, you have, one of the things I get to do is make good neighbor awards for people who have done good things in our community. And I just wanted to let you see, I made a good neighbor award to Dave Martin. He is a wonderful man, lives out with Lois out at the airpark. You can see the wonderful things that he has done for the community, and I know there are many other things that he's been part of in our community. He's a wonderful kind of guy, and his last line say, "Dave Martin is the definition of a good neighbor, and I had the pleasure of actually presenting him a nice certificate on behalf of the City of Independence, and thanking him for many years of service, and optimism, encouragement on so many fronts with so many folks." So please know that I acted in our collective name to recognize a wonderful neighbor in our community. Other reports I'd like to give to you, as many of you know, I'm on the board of the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments. I've done that for a number of years. And at our recent annual awards banquet, our former city manager here in Independence, David Klein, received a, the West Covarston Award for professional service for 40 years and serving five cities in Oregon as a city manager. And after he left us and retired, he also went on and did some interim work in Fall City. He's even doing interim work as we speak today up in Gresham. So that was a wonderful opportunity. The City of Newburgh made the nomination, and they asked me to help make the award along with Mayor Rogers out of Newburgh. And so that was really a fun thing to do. I've also been appointed to the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments Legislative Committee to keep, help keep track and represent, along with their lobbyist, the issues related to the 43-member government cities, counties, and special districts represented by the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments. And also, final thing, at the request of the League of Oregon Cities, I submitted testimony with great help from Tom Pesamir on House Bill 3040, which was, has drafted, would change how SDCs are collected in the state of Oregon. It's a bad bill, it's bad for independents, it's bad for Oregon cities, and the League of Oregon Cities has helped bring a number of people together to help the legislature understand. Many of them do not understand how cities are financed, how development is financed, where the monies come from. And so we're working very, very hard on trying to defeat that bill. And it's, it's one of the most important ones that the league is working on. So we'll keep you appraised of how that's going, but I did want you to know that that was taking place. With that-
Mr. Mayor, the bill number again, I didn't catch it.
House Bill 3040 with the dash one amendments. And yeah, we'll be meeting with, we've, we've already met with legislative staff on these, and they know where we are, and they're in agreement with us. They don't understand how some legislators think. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pesamir for his city manager report.
So, thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot for tonight, just some updates. We are still waiting for guidance from the Treasury Department in regards to the American Rescue Plan. I think you know that some of this money is going to get pushed down directly to the local government level, and they're promising some flexible rules so we can get those monies to the people that need it and the areas that need it. So we're very excited to see that information come out. Until it does or really isn't anything we can do, the, my understanding is they're going to be splitting the payment up into two pieces. The first would come about 30 to 60 days after the, the request is put into the state, which is a much of a formality, is my understanding. And the second would come a year from that. So those monies will kind of trickle in for time, I think, because it's a rescue plan. It's also somewhat of a recovery plan, it sounds like. And so those monies will get spent over time. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training, we've talked about this a lot in the past, but I just wanted to let you know that that first round of training finished this Thursday. That training was put on by Western Oregon University, and they did an incredible job of putting that together. I have no idea how much time they put into, and thought they put into that, but they were really looking to do something, not only that was impactful to the local governments and organizations in the area, but also something that they could do in the future for, for other classes. So I think they're in the process of figuring out how to structure, structure that right now. There were eight people from Independence staff that attended that. So we definitely got a lot of great information and great training out of that. The library is now open. It's a limited reopening, and my understanding, talking to Patrick Bodley, the library manager, is it's been very active over there. So that's great news. Sounds like people are coming in, being very respectful, using the library as it should be. And so they're still looking at how that's working, but of course, as they can't open up more, they will. But they have been open the entire last week and this week, and plan us taking, staying open as long as they can. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a quick update on something. We have kind of had a little bit of separation, I guess is the best way to say it, between city uses and farm uses, especially out at the sports park. The sports park abuts directly up with some, some large fields that are doing agricultural use and have been doing agricultural use for a long, long time. That's my understanding is a long time ago, there was some sort of agreement for the city to put in some trees there to help buffer between the two uses. And so we were actually able to work with the farmer there who owns that, as well as some others. And so if you go out there today, you'll see that a bunch of Leyland cypress trees have been placed out there. Those are pretty quick growing trees, and so, you know, it'll take a number of years, but those trees will go up and provide a buffer between the two uses. The city paid for the trees, they cost about $5,000. We actually had one of the people in the area who we worked with, Fremont Forest Services donated their time value to $2,000, $2,500 to plant the trees. So they did that voluntarily for the city. And by the way, we got the trees from Rocky Mountain Nursery, which is a local nursery. And then the farmer, Sedniker Farms, was going to be watering the trees to make sure they survive. So good partnership there, good to, you know, see that we can work collaboratively and get something done that probably will benefit both the city and the farmer and for the long term. Just a couple of quick grants. I try to let you know anytime we're applying for grants, but we are looking to do another Transportation Growth Management Grant that's through ODOT. It might actually be a quick response grant. They're actually both from the same funding source, and they just act a little bit differently. A letter of intent is due here soon, so just giving you a heads up. We've talked about it internally, and one of the things that jumped out in the 2040 Vision Plan was the Central Plaza area. So not just the plaza, but the area around it as well. There's a number of different opportunities there that are getting identified in both the Transportation System Plan as well as opportunities for uses in that area, which would get some users who need to be closer to different services. So I really don't know what to say about it, because that's part of the grant, is to actually kind of study the area and figure out what makes sense there. But we've spent a lot of time looking at the downtown, old town area, and we feel that based on what we saw in the 2040 Vision Plan, we ought to at least go out there and look and see what are the possibilities that are that area. So obviously, we don't know if we'll be successful in that, but certainly we're going to try to do that. Our last TGM grant was actually the Transportation System Plan. So the ODOT has essentially been paying for all the work that we've been doing on that from the last year. And then we also are applying for Oregon State Marine Board Boating Facility Grant. I may have mentioned this before, but basically, we're looking at a grant to design paddlers access in River View Park. So those are both out there. So I really don't have a whole lot else, but I'm here for questions, and my staff is kind of waiting in the wings if you have questions as well.
Questions for the manager?
Yes. Any idea what's going in down at Central Plaza? I know that that's sold, and there is a crew in remodeling inside of the old roths.
Yeah, we don't have any information on that. They certainly haven't pulled any building permits, and so I think it's just some cleanup work is from what we've heard at this point, but-
Okay, and how about any update on Independence Station?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, Aaron Young has got his sign up there, and he continues to tell us that he is getting really close to coming in with an land use application. So we're, we're tracking that and waiting to see that. But if that holds true, yeah, we should see something here in the near, very near future, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, moving forward for liaison reports, I'm not sure if all the committees have met, but this is just an opportunity to check in. Councilor Roden, do you have anything for WIMPAG?
I do. I, this was my first meeting with WIMPAG, and we've talked with Marty Weins, the city manager of Monmouth, to discuss the PEG fees, which is the Public Education and Government Channel access fees. And she says she is fighting with charter cable providers in order for them to pay. They have a fee right now where they get paid a dollar per prescriber per month in order to get these fees. And so we voted on it that night if we wanted to have her utilize a significant amount of her time to try to fight for these fees, which she said charter would fight tooth and nail, she feels, not to pay. And so we decided that it probably, for the, for the money that it would collect, which would be at best $2,000 a year, that it might not be the best way of doing it. But then, so we voted on it, and we, we, she's going to write the language where we can still negotiate with charter in the future to try to get those fees put in, but we thought it was more beneficial to college students and the people who use charter services to get this public education and government channel than to fight for these fees. And then we kind of got into a debate, a positive debate on equity of the situation where MyNet pays the dollar per prescriber fee, charter won't pay it, so there's equity problems there. And I said that we should just negotiate each business individually and see where we can go, because I guess it's been a trend that smaller local internet providers and companies do pay the fees a lot better than the big companies. And it was, it was going to cost the City of Monmouth several thousands of dollars to try to fight for this and potentially not even get it. So we decided to keep the language open, but to just go ahead and get that public service out to people who need it, for the public education channels out to people who need it. And they also told me that they have a satellite that was damaged during the ice storm, but we have insurance to cover the replacement of it, and so it shouldn't be an issue. And we're going to look at some more capital investments to continue to bring good programming out to the City of Monmouth and Independence with this channel.
Thank you, it's Councilor Roden, I appreciate that. And yes, the, the issues with charter are not alone, we are not alone. They have fought across the West. And yeah, if the league's legal people could tell all sorts of stories about this. So anyway, Councilor Morton, I think the library board, anything from us, for us today?
Yes, I have both the library board and the museum. And I wanted to tell you just one little extra bit of information on WIMPAG, which is that it's not MyNet who pays the fees to WIMPAG, it's the customers that MyNet collects the fee from. So it's that charter is not collecting the fee because they refuse to carry the channel. So that's, I, I have been on the WIMPAG board off and on for, oh, I don't know, 20 years.
I'm so- That is correct, I should have been more specific on that.
Well, I'm so glad that you are in that position, because I think fresh eyes and ears will go a long ways.
Thank you.
Okay, on the library, Tom already announced that the library is open, and, hang on, I just lost my screen there. The library director said that after 364 days of closure, the library finally reopened, and the first two customers in the door were two young gentlemen who had been waiting patiently to come in and get their own library cards. So that was their very first business after opening. And the library director has been sharing videos about board makeup, board focus, and board comportment, which are all very interesting. And the library is also considering a strategic plan, or the library board is considering strategic plan updates. So that will be in their future. Can I just roll right on into the-
Please do.
Okay. The Heritage Museum is looking forward to a potential summer opening at the new location on Second Street. They've done a great deal of work getting ready to prepare for occupation of the new space. There was significant discussion about fundraising, and though I am neither, I am an official member of neither the Museum Society or the Museum Board, I have offered all possible assistance towards fundraising efforts this year. I was able to, to come, come to them with some fundraising experience that doesn't necessarily exist across the board or society right now. So prepared to open up your pocketbooks later on, and that's all I have.
Great, appreciate that. Mid-Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance, Councilor Corr, do you have anything for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been attending the homeless life meetings now for about nine months, and been somewhat discouraged because the focus of the meetings tends to be on Salem and not the outlined rural areas. The Monmouth representative and I, County Service Organization, a couple of weeks ago, and that meeting has kind of jump-started an effort to form a rural subcommittee of the Mid-Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. We have our first meeting this week, and I'm really hopeful that one of the things we might be able to accomplish is to reestablish a satellite service center here in Independence, because centralizing services in Dallas is a nonstarter for a lot of homeless people. So more to come on that.
Thank you, really appreciate that. Okay.
Oh. I did have the Parks and Rec-
Oh, go ahead.
We, we did have a meeting, it was my first meeting for Parks and Rec. It was a small meeting, we only had two committee members present, and then Sean Irvine was there. We talked about the grant that Mr. Pesamir had talked about, which would be for signage, amenity signage on the river and the paddler access, which actually is really cool. And I think we're supposed to find out in June if we get the grant, but then it would be available again in two years. They talked about doing kayaks again down at the, the riverfront. They also talked about possibly having a couple of spots open for the community to be on the Parks and Rec Committee, so that may be something that's coming up. And we got kind of excited and started talking about bringing more awareness to the city parks. We feel like we have a lot of really cool city parks that maybe not everybody knows about and knows what they offer. The sports complex is one. So we're kind of brainstorming ideas to really get the word out what Independence has to offer in our parks so that more people utilize those facilities. That's about it.
Thank you, appreciate that. You know, sometimes it looks like my head's on, I'm scribbling notes as, as I'm, because I think the things that you folks are telling us are important, and I want, and I write them down so that I can track those. We have nothing else here. We're going to, what we're going to do, folks, is we're going to recess to go to a work session, and for, we'll have a work session for the city council. And this is just an opportunity for the city manager to provide information. This is a conversation, there are not going to be any decisions made here. This is just going to be a, an information, a discussion, a presentation, and possible discussion on our capital improvement plan. After that's done, we'll reconvene, and then we'll go into executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transaction. So without objection, we're going to go to the, we're going to recess to the work session, and Mr. Pesamir, I think this is yours.
So, thank you, Mayor. Normally, this probably would be done by our Public Works Director, but as you know, we're advertising for that position right now. So if anybody out there is interested in being a Public Works Director, we currently have a recruitment going. So I think we'll kind of tag team this a little bit. Ken Perkins is joining us, Ken's our Public Works Supervisor. He's been here for a long time, does a great job, and knows the things that, that I don't know. So between the two of us, we'll give you a presentation. And just so you know, we're, we'll go on here for a while. So I think by the end of the night, you'll be more than tired of hearing my voice. But we definitely want to make sure you have adequate information, but not too much information to kind of know what's going on with our capital improvement plan and where we're headed down the road. So just, it was kind of interesting preparing for this, because normally, we'd all be in a room, and we'd have these big, huge 11 by 17 sheets of paper before you with stacks and stacks of stuff that we would be going through. But that's not really practical when you're doing it virtually. So kind of switch things up here a little bit, and I'll kind of talk about how we're going to present it. But certainly, when we actually present the, the final capital improvement plan, and what you're getting tonight is a draft, you'll have all the information, it'll be in the budget documents, and you'll be able to see the long term as well as the short term, and how that fits into the budget documents. But for tonight, I've kind of simplified some things. I'm going to share my screen here, and hopefully this works, and we'll get started. Right here, so we do a couple of- All right, can you all see that and see my mouse hopefully too? All right, good. Okay, so just kind of jumping in, this is the draft, Independence Capital Improvement Plan. It is certainly not the final, whether there's still some work that we have to do. Particularly, we need to balance all the different funding sources out that support the projects in the capital improvement plan. And we also need to make sure that we have all of the out-years figured out as well. But right now, we're concentrating on fiscal year 2022, fiscal year ending 2022, which starts July 1st of 2021, and ends on June 30th of 2022. That is the budget period that we're all working on very diligently here. And you will all be hearing a lot more about here in the upcoming months as we get the Budget Committee together and do presentations for the Budget Committee, who will then make a recommendation to Council for approval. So just kind of an overview of what we are doing. Oh my goodness, now I messed something up. So hold on, let me see what I've done here. I think I started in the wrong spot, so let me go back to the beginning. There we go. So just kind of an overview of what we are talking about tonight. And just for those who may have not had a chance before, what is a capital improvement plan? It really establishes the priorities and plans for the funding of projects to improve our existing and develop new infrastructure and facilities. So these are the big capital projects that we talked about. They're almost always more than $50,000. They're something that's going to be in place for, you know, a long period of time. Usually five years is the minimum that you would be looking at, but usually it's 10, 20, 50, 100 years. The plan promotes efficient use of the city's limited financial resources, reduces costs, and assists in the coordination of public and private development. So what we're trying to accomplish with this plan is really take a five-year look at all the projects that we have coming up and making sure that we're thinking just not about this year or last year, but all the projects that we need to be doing over a five-year period. And really, the five-year period really comes from our master plans, which are even longer, those are usually 20-year plans. But we're trying to back into what we can accomplish in a, in a shorter period of time, although we do identify the longer-term projects as well, just so we don't lose anything. So it is a five-year roadmap, which identifies major expenditures, typically beyond routine annual operating expenses, but we also include some of those as well. It serves as a long-term rainy, long-range plan, and we review and revise it annually. The priorities may change in the capital improvement plan as we have funding opportunities that come up. As you know, we chase down grants all the time, and when we have the opportunity to get a grant, we're certainly not going to turn it down because it's not on our capital improvement plan. We'll just change our capital improvement plan and put it on there and get the project done, so. Or if we have a project that deteriorates more rapidly than we expected, then sometimes we'll shuffle projects around in that five-year timeframe on the capital improvement plan. The process is really the result of our ongoing infrastructure planning. We spend a lot of time and effort trying to figure out what's going on with our infrastructure. It's critically important that we understand really that entire 20-year timeline of what we need to be doing for projects for capital. And really, the core of that comes from the master plans. And so we'll talk about that as we go through this, because we are currently doing two master plans. As you know, one is the Transportation System Plan, which is being funded by ODOT through the Transportation Growth Management Grant. And the other is our Sanitary Sewer Master Plan. Our sanitary sewer master plan, you really haven't seen, and that's because just during COVID, we really haven't gone out to get the public input yet. But it's definitely moving along, and we want to make sure that we get great understanding and transparency in that process. So as we are able to have more meetings and do more things, you'll definitely see us bringing that forward and making sure that you know what's going on with the sanitary sewer master plan. What you're seeing tonight is the draft CIP. We reviewed a city staff, which we've done, and then we presented to Council, which is what we're doing tonight. And the projects that, that are listed out of tonight are what we're going to be working on to make sure they're in the city budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So your feedback is appreciated, but we definitely want to make sure that you know what is going on in our capital improvement plan. So just, you probably might be wondering, you know, how are capital improvement plans funded? Because that's obviously the other piece. We're not going to go into a lot of the detail of that. That will come more during the budget presentations. But there are a number of different ways that capital projects get funded. So it's not just one thing. Matter of fact, some projects have many different components that go into them. And you'll see some of that tonight as you, you look- Um, some projects have uh, many different components that go into them and you'll see some of that tonight as you, you look at um. At some of the projects that we're, we're, we're talking about. So. The financialist instruments that are typically used um, are outside funds. That's of course where we look first, grants. Federal money, state money, county funds, donations, or whatever. Um, you know, obviously that's where we're going to try to. Uh, to maximize um, outside sources so that we don't have to use uh, inside resources uh, to do that. Um, I'll talk about those here in a second. Um, development fees, those are the system development charges uh, that you hear about. Um, but for growth-related projects, um, system development charges are there in order to make sure that when. We have uh, development and growth going on, um, the developers are making sure that they're paying for the uh, capacity increases to the systems that are there. Uh, utility fund revenues, those are um, what you would see on your utility bill. Um, those are broken down by different fund. Um, but those uh, typically pay for capital improvement pro- projects, especially those that are maintenance or related to. Items that have decayed over time just because of, of use. Uh, general fund revenue, every once uh, while we will use general fund revenue, especially in parks projects and, and those kind of uh, projects. Um, if we don't have enough funds, we will uh, sometimes go out and take debt. Um, and if you notice, it says debt secured by restricted revenue source. Um, and that's one of the things about debt that um, we don't talk about a lot, but uh, is really important is because. Uh, restricted revenue sources are really the only things that debt providers will take as collateral for the loan that you're going to take. So. If we're going to be doing a large sewer project, let's say, um, and we go out debt in order to uh, do that, which we have here uh, recently with the state. Um, they're not going to look at system development charges or growth related, even though the project may be entirely growth related. Because it's uncertain as to how much of that revenue or when you're going to collect that revenue. So they um, make sure that you have enough. Uh, restricted revenue sources, which is really utility fund uh, resources that you see on your utility bill. Um, in order to cover the debt that you're taking out. So obviously. Uh, we look at that very carefully as well as do the uh, people who are obligating the debt um, to make sure that uh, everything is um. Covered and that it is uh, there. Um, and then general obligation debt, and, and this really kind of is put in order of preference. Um, general obligation debt is um, something that is um. You only do when you really need to do it and you do it because you have a really uh, high need that the uh, public is, understands and is going to. Support because that geo bonds um, or geo, general obligation debt is something that you go out to the public uh, to take a vote on. So. Um, that is something that um, you use when you have a very big project and you really don't have any other good ways to fund it. So, so what is typically in a capital improvement plan? It's really the same thing, but it's the same thing over and over and over and over and over again. So. Here's kind of what uh, you would typically see, and I'm using kind of the parks from the last year's um, capital improvement plan, just as an example. So. If we zoom in on that. You can see that uh, this is from. The fiscal year starting uh, or ending in twenty twenty-one. So this is from last year. And you can see that it lists um, the different projects that are in that five-year uh, timeline that we're, we're looking at. Um, then it breaks it out into different years. So for this fiscal year, this was what was in the capital improvement plan for this year. For next fiscal year, this is what was planned to be um, in the uh, fiscal year uh, ending in twenty twenty-two and then. The out years, um, as you can see. So. Really the focus uh, typically is on the current budget year, and that is because uh, you know a lot more about that. You need to make sure that your budget balances. Um, and your uh, out years um, are sometimes more aspirational on, you know, the amount of money that you're going to have to do things. And I think a good example of that and kind of why I pulled this up is to show you that is, is if you take a look at uh, Sunset Park Final Design Engineering and, and actually construction. Um, so this year we budgeted uh, fifty thousand dollars to that. And for next fiscal year, we had estimated, you know, six hundred thousand for that. Um, that's a lot of money for the parks fund. Uh, we don't collect that much money in the parks fund um, year over year. Certainly don't collect one point one billion dollars in the parks fund year over year. So. Um, so what happens is you either go looking for grants, which is exactly what we did. Uh, we've been trying to get grants for Sunset Park so far, haven't been successful on that. So what happens is, is when you get to the next year and you'll see this when we get to the parks. Um, capital improvement plan projects, uh, you just move that out. Um, that just kind of moves out over the years. Um, kind of what we're planning on doing with Sunset Park, um, kind of giving away what we can talk about later. Is we're going to just try to do this part, this part slowly over time. Um, uh, that's the way our revenues come in. If we can land a big grant or get some monies, um, sooner than that, obviously we'll uh, move the project up in the schedule and get it finished. But um, that's uh, kind of what we're looking at. So typically what you'll see is just all the part uh, projects over the five-year period listed. Um, we have some source types, just that's more for our internal use to make sure we know um, where the different funds are coming from. Um, uh, so the type and then the fund. Um, and then we tie all those numbers out uh, to get our totals uh, for each fiscal year. The second thing you'll see is for each one of these projects, uh, we will then have a separate sheet. Um, which kind of details uh, what's in the project. So where did this project come from? Well, it came from the two thousand fifteen. Parks Open Space and Master Plan. So that's what the project is. Uh, it's a highly ranked project. Um, and it talks in more detail about what we're actually trying to accomplish. Um, and then really just gives more detailed information about the product so that we can track it over year to year. We kind of know what's happening. And there's more information for each project for those who wanted to dig into either a particular project. Or if they just like reading capital improvement plans and want to read through every project. Uh, we definitely want to make sure that the information is there. One, so we can be transparent, but two, so we can just keep track of it. Uh, we got a lot of projects going on and it helps us to make sure that we're organized and, and making sure that we. We know uh, what we're trying to accomplish over a period of time. So rather than going into each and every one of those in detail, which I think would be. A bit of a challenge, especially if we're talking about projects in out years. Um, I figured it would be a little bit easier to basically just look at. The next fiscal year. So what you're going to see tonight are just the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-two projects that are drafted and that we're putting in our budget. Um, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is to simplify the presentation and the other is, is because we're getting a new transportation system plan and a new. Uh, sewer master plan, those projects uh, over the next five and twenty years are going to be changing significantly as we get more information. Uh, through the master plans um, about how they uh, what we need to accomplish. And typically you do your master plans every ten years. Um, you can do them shorter than that, but uh, if you get longer than ten years. And typically you're kind of starting to guess at what your capital improvement pla- projects are going to be. Um, and that's not good. And it's also not good because corollary to. Doing your master plan and right after you do your master plan is you do your uh, SDC methodology and fee uh, study. Which basically lets you know how you're actually going to pay for the projects that were identified. Um, and so those go hand in hand and, and uh, lead into the capital improvement plan and we'll be talking about that as we go through their. Uh, through this because there are certain examples uh, of that. So. Um, this is uh, kind of just an example of what you would see. Um, I actually meant to have a parks. Uh, rather than stormwater here. So um, but uh, def- this is kind of what we're going to go through tonight, just looking at the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-two projects. So just that's kind of a quick overview. Um, I can see most of you on my screen, but I have to look over here. So if I'm pretending like I'm looking away, so I'm just looking at a different screen so I can. Can actually see you. Um, I uh. I guess I do a better job of looking at my audience and sometimes I think so. Um, so we'll start with streets. Uh, just jumping right in. So kind of this is just a outline of the city of Independence and I'm going to kind of. Walk through this and as I present them, um, we'll kind of go back and forth. So you can kind of see. Where some of these projects are located. We tried to provide some pictures so you can kind of uh, understand exactly um, what projects we're talking about. Uh, so these are streets or transportation projects. As I mentioned. Um, once we get the transportation system plan done, we'll have a much more robust list of projects uh, to accomplish. Um, but here are the projects that we're proposing for uh, the next fiscal year. Um, so the first is um. F Street uh, Bridge Replacement. As you can see, uh, that is a project that is a high dollar amount. Um, but as most of you probably know, or. Will be happy to know, uh, most of that project is being funded um, by a grant from um, Oregon Department of Transportation. Uh, we do have matching funds uh, for that project. Um, but uh, the, the most of the project is actually going to be paid uh, by ODOT. So. Um, this is a project that uh, staff uh, from a number of years ago went after really hard and were successful in getting. Um, and will be a huge uh, benefit to a lot of the things we're seeing in the TSP. And some of the things that uh, counselor uh, Roden and others have brought up about trying to create other connections. Um, to uh, help with the intersections that we have at Main Street. So. Um, F Street Bridge, just kind of jumping to that project is um, it's number one. So it'll be close to that number one on my screen there. Um, and uh. There kind of pulls it up. This is an old aerial, um, but it kind of shows uh, the area. So this is really. Uh, Inspiration Garden uh, right here in this area. Uh, this is the old um, lumber plant. And this is Ash Creek that runs in between the two. You can see F Street Bridge right here in this location. And the project is really to essentially replace that bridge. Um, kind of zoom in at there a little bit more and. Just kind of let you see the kind of the extents of what the project is going to be. You can see here is the bridge proper. Um, and the, the rails between it, but there's also needs to be asphalt that goes back and forth and transition areas on either side. There are sidewalks on both sides of the bridge, um, as well as a bike uh, and uh, access as well. So. A, a major improvement to this area. Um, there's some stormwater facilities over here as well, but you can see, I'll just kind of toggle back and forth. Um, kind of where that bridge sits relative to um, where the uh, old bridge site is. Um, currently they're uh, in design on this project and um. They are expecting a bid at June, July of this year. So uh, definitely uh, we'll be ready to do that. We'll also be taking a look at the bidding environment, making sure that. Um, that is uh, the, the smart thing to do, but uh, definitely making progress on this project. Um, it's actually closer to a two million dollar project, but three hundred thousand dollars of that was spent this last year um, for design services. Um, just kind of a couple of pictures. Here's a picture looking east. Um, weight limit of seven tons. Uh. Uh, we're worried about the Independence Bridge being twenty-five. I think, I think this is seven. Um, this bridge is really in, in poor shape. Um, obviously there's no pedestrian. Uh, connections there. Um, and if you take a look from underneath, you can see it's a timber bridge. It just quite frankly. Um, needs to be replaced. I'll note in the background here, you'll see this is actually a water line. We'll talk about that water line here. I mentioned in uh, the beginning that. Sometimes these projects have multiple funding sources. Uh, this is one of those projects that, that, that does. Not only is it getting um, money from. ODOT, the city has matching funds for part of the street as well as we're going to use uh, some water in the store monies as well in order to uh. Provider matching funds for this project. Uh, let's see. So jumping back out, um. Main Street Reconstruction Project. So this is another transportation project and it's uh, about five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars uh, for the street stuff. Uh, roadways have gotten very, very, very expensive to, to operate and maintain. And one of the things that we'll be coming back to council to talk about is uh, maintenance and operations of our, our roadways in the future. Um, but we're using the monies that we have um, collected through the state gas tax as well as um, other uh, funding sources. Uh, to get this project done. That, this project has a tremendous amount of volume on it. So that's why it gets rated really high in the. Uh, the construction paving index calculations that we do. Um, and so it's something that we have pretty much been designing for a while. Um, and um, I'll just jump to it here. So. It's that project three A, which you can see there and its location is really between. F Street and the Independence Bridge, that section of pavement there. Um, and so that entire uh, section of pavement will be. Uh, ground up uh, and overlaid. Um, Ken's here and Ken can comment a little bit more um, if he wants, but certainly this is a project that we're. We're looking at doing. I'll show you a couple of pictures here just real quick. Um, you're, this is looking from F Street South and you can see the transition from the pavement that was done with the prior project. Um, and the pavement and the condition that it's kind of being in that area. Right now there's another picture. So. Ken, do you have anything to, to add to that?
Yeah, I'd like to say also that uh, along that roadway, I mean, we've got many, many potholes. I'm sure some of you are aware, but we try to take care of them, but it's just never ending. Along with the pavement, uh, we plan on doing some curb stuff and some new street entrances that really need some attention. And along with that, there'll be some storm work as well.
All right, so. That's that next project. Uh, Ken, do you want to talk about the sweeper? Um, I'll let you lead out and then I'll, I'll just follow. So.
Okay. Um, I don't know how many of you are aware, but we've got an older sweeper. I want to say it's about a two thousand and six. Um, they're very expensive, but we are getting to the point of maintenance that it's time to do a purchase of the sweeper. We have. Tried to Band-Aid it many times, um, depending on the year and what's wrong with it. Uh, I believe two years ago, we spent fifty thousand dollars in maintenance and, but we weren't quite there for a purchase. So we decided to hold off for another year after. Doing some major repairs and we did. Those repair numbers have gone down, but there's a breaking point of when you need to do uh. Uh, replacement and it is definitely time. Uh, the sweeper that we are looking at is a newer style sweeper with one engine versus a two-engine that we have. Um, and it's a very, very expensive piece of machinery, but we're sweeping two days a week. Uh, Monday and Thursdays and that might eventually go to three days a week with the growth that we're seeing. And then this is also split through another account, it's, which will come up here in a little bit. So that funding is uh, half funding out of streets.
Yeah, so Ken very much wants to replace this uh, logo with the City of Independence logo. Um, we've looked at um, options to lease and uh, those don't make any sense. Um, essentially you end up paying a lot more uh, to lease a sweeper um, or come up with other uh, solutions. So. Um, I know our finance director has looked at this carefully along with the public works and. And we believe that uh, purchasing our own um, sweeper that's actually going to do the job that we need is, is a much better way of going about it, doing it. They are very expensive, uh, surprisingly. Um, that money that you saw there is only half of the sweeper. Uh, the remainder of the monies is in the um. Storm fund. So when we get to that, you'll, you'll see that uh, allocation there as well. All right, so jumping back, um, we're on item number seven. This is a gun club and Hoffman Safety Improvements. And these are just the matching funds. So you see the project here is just a hundred thousand dollars, but the overall project is much higher than that. That's just the money that the City of Independence. Um, needs to allocate to that project. Um, you'll notice that F Street Bridge, again, we're not paying one point seven million for it. But the difference is, is this is a reimbursable. So um, we have to show the money going out of our account and then there will be. A corresponding grant funding line coming in um, for that on the, the Hoffman. For the Gun Club and Hoffman Project, the money's going through the county. So really we only have money going out for our matching funds related to that project. I'll show you a few images here, but I think Ken can probably explain this project better than I can. So go ahead, Ken.
So this is a joint project with uh, Polk County, Monmouth and the City of Independence. So this is a joint project with Polk County, Monmouth and the City of Independence. And it's more so for safer routes to school and whatnot. I know that Polk County was originally trying to get a traffic light there that was shot down. So that's not happening. But we look at doing where it's a much safer process, especially along the west side of Gun Club. And then also the south side of, of Hoffman Road. So it'll be a much safer pedestrian route. It will be curb and gutter and storm work, that type of thing. Realigning the, the crosswalk and just making it a much safer route.
Yeah. So sorry, I didn't label this, but this is Hoffman Road here. This is Gun Club coming south off of Hoffman. And then you see 16th over here where the schools are. So.
Counselor Cora, I think you're trying to wave in.
Yeah. Is it okay to ask questions?
Of course.
I know the safe house to school issue has been an ongoing one, trying to get the grant money. Now that the apartment complex going in on Hoffman Road up the street in Monmouth. I think that's going to make that stoplight issue even more important. Is there any effort to look at that going forward?
You know, we, we talked about the, that with the county just the other day. And you know, they're still pretty frustrated that the signal got pulled out. And so I, I don't know that we have an official, a plan of attack yet, but certainly it's something that we're continuing to look at. We did, we were told when that wasn't supported in the safe rest of school that it scored well. And we should come back to the same program for that. So chances are that we'll be looking either to that same pot of money or something else to get that done.
One more question and maybe Ken can answer this. Going back to the sweeper on the truck, it said echo infused. I can't find any definition of echo infused. Do you know what that means?
I don't, but I'll get, I'll get.
No, it's cool. Thank you.
So here's just a couple of pictures. That's the intersection of Gun Club and Hoffman. You can see things aren't great there. You've got the ditch and, and there is a path there, but not the best path in the world. And then just here's another picture coming down Gun Club. You can see there's nothing over here on the west side as Ken mentioned, except for a ditch.
Tom, can you go back to that previous picture? So what, what we're looking for is something like this east side of Hoffman. Where it's much more separation, curb, all that stuff, sidewalk, you know, and it'll be lifted and, and whatnot. So it will definitely be a lot safer.
I have a question on that. Is Pacific Power going to pay for any of the damaged paths that they created on that? I believe it's specific to power who runs that power station right there. Is that right? Or is that Monmouth Power?
It's Bonneville and Pacific Power.
Yeah. So when, when they were putting their heavy machinery in there, they went and drove across those, the path and broke a lot of the sidewalks. I walk that, that path almost daily. Are they going to be responsible for any of those fees?
That will all get torn out.
Yeah. I mean, I, this is a county's project, so we'd have to ask them that. But since it is, I think what Ken's kind of trying to kind of say is it's all getting removed and replaced. And all this is getting reconfigured anyway. So probably wouldn't. They probably won't be going back to ask Pacific Power for that. So.
Okay.
All right. So moving on, that was project number seven. So project number eight. I don't have any visuals for this. We've talked about this a lot during the capital improvement plan as well as a number of other things. $50,000 obviously is not the project cost. The project cost is probably closer to nine or 10 million dollars. But we need to get started somewhere. And so this money would really be to start looking at some refinements of alignments and starting to look at some of the wetland issues we have out there, trying to kind of determine where we might want to be crossing Ash Creek. Certainly we're getting a good amount of information of the transportation system plan, which is assisting in that. But we need to continue to move this forward. It's very clear that that's a key project that needs to get moved forward and we need to keep moving it forward. So we're going to allocate monies to get some consultant fees to help us to understand what we need to do in order to get that done. We still have railroad issues and a number of things. So we'll, we'll really be using that money just for consultants to figure out how we can keep that project moving forward as fast as we possibly can. You'll probably see as we finish the capital or the transportation system plan and we get into doing what is the next item, number nine, street SDC and P updates. We'll really be looking very carefully at how we're going to pay for these projects. And so that isn't just the Southern Arterial. It's actually all of the projects that will come out of the transportation system plan. And so we, we need to update our system development charge methodology. We need to make sure that we're being fair to the development community, but also that the development community, at least we know what impact the development community is having to present to council to decide what they want to, to do ultimately with system development charges. But we have a lot of work to do there. These are very very detailed financial analysis. They get into very deep into the weeds and make sure that we have the monies that we need in order to do these projects over the long term. A lot of this also is fee updates. I mentioned at the beginning that we have issues with our streets. We have some issues with our sidewalks and we have other things. And so we also need to look at potential fee updates or other ways to fund our transportation system and make sure that we're long, looking to the long term. And make sure that we don't end up in a situation where we have failing infrastructure and extraordinarily high costs. We would rather spread that over time and make sure that we are being fair throughout the entire project. So that's project number nine is $75,000, typically just a regular SDC methodology. Would be about 50, but given the complexities that we have with everything, we bump that up to 75,000 to make sure that we have the money to cover those particular projects. So.
Can I get a jump in with a quick question likely for Ken you mentioned? And we're going to go way back to the sweeper. I apologize. So it was mentioned, I believe that our current sweeper is a 2006. So are we looking at, at a likely lifespan of about 15 years?
Yeah. And is Glory in on this meeting, Tom?
She's available, I believe, if we want to pull her in.
So I believe on the, so what we try to do is we try to cycle all of the bigger equipment because it's so expensive. And you know, a couple of years back, we got the, the back trailer and the backhoe. And so we try to get those where we're either doing every five years, especially if we're doing leases and whatnot, where we buy them out. So that way we don't come and hit so heavy on big equipment because they're all so expensive. And I believe we just have one more year on that. And that's, you know, that's what we were trying to hold out for is to keep that rotation going. But it's to the point where we need to move forward with the, with the sweeper purchase. And there is, and I apologize Counselor Cora for not having more ready information. I actually Cliff is one of the, is the lead street sweeper operator. And if you look under, it's under Elgin is what it's under. And it's actually under street sweeper environment. And basically it's, it's more, it's more eco-friendly in regards to contaminants, contaminants and stuff where they have less stuff that gets out in the air, less water to go on the drains. And it cycles better so that not, we're not leaving more stuff for the catch basins and whatnot. Because in a little bit, when we talk about storm, we'll be talking about TMVL, which is polluting, it's going, you know, possibly going to the river and that sort of thing. And I could give a link to this too. So if you guys would like that. Pardon me?
I'm looking it up right now. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, you bet.
But Ken, I, I believe our current sweeper broke down a couple of years ago. And to repair these sweepers is really, really expensive. Do you remember what the bill was on that?
It was roughly 50,000 throughout that year. And there were some pretty big fixes because if you have to fix the broom head and stuff, we have to take it up to Portland and have them repair it. These aren't repairs that, you know, if we had an oil change or a starter or something like that, you know, we'll, we'll do something like that. But when it's really specific to the sweeper, we need to take it up to the representative, have them work on it. And that was a very significant year. So that's what's held us off for a couple of years in having lower repairs, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now you mentioned that, that the funds were coming from a couple of different places. So I'm, I'm guessing this number here is not the total price tag on this item.
No, yeah, we'll show it in the storm fund when we get there as well. So.
Okay.
The, the total price is 290. It's a.
And that's, that's what I wrote down as I was kind of figuring the annual expense on one of these. Yeah.
They're not cheap. They do a lot of work for us.
Absolutely.
Not only cleaning the streets, but also dealing with the leaves and, and other, other things. And every city has the same issue and every city, you know, really struggles with, with the high cost of them. But, but what we're, what we're concerned about, what we've been concerned about is we have that $50,000 repair bill. And we know we're on limited time that we have with the existing sweeper. So how long is it till we have a $90,000 repair bill? I know we had a $90,000 repair bill insured on our sweeper a number of years ago. And it's just, they're just really expensive. Okay. All right. So I'm going to move on for transportation. So does anybody have any more questions? All right. So we'll move to the water system now. So water system, again, another map of independence. And we'll just kind of move around and try to show you where these projects are. Someday we'll all get in a van and drive around and see all the infrastructure and, and have some fun. I, I know Public Works really enjoys doing that. And we just haven't been able to get everybody out of here, especially the new counselors. I know some of you have already seen this multiple times, but I definitely have a lot of infrastructure in the city which serves the residents. And, and we, we want to make sure that people know about it. But just starting, project two A is the Main Street Water Line. And really, you know, whenever we do a road project, we look for projects that we can improve other utilities. Because we just don't want to go back digging it up after we put the payment down. So Ken, you want to talk about the water line project here?
Sure. It's the same area as the street project from F to I Street, the bridge there. And we've got two water lines. So we've got redundant mains there. The one currently that is serving all the water services to residences there is a six inch AC line, which our AC lines here in town are actually not bad. We check the cores on anytime we work on those mains or services. And we don't have a really bad pH problem. So we don't have asbestos issues. However, we have another main line and there is a 10 inch line that used to go to a reservoir. And so we're going to move all of this, take out all of the old services on the main, which some of them could possibly be old lead services and it's copper, which tends to leak quite a bit here in town. And we'll go to poly services and we'll transfer those to the PVC pipe. And then we will abandon the AC line. There's also down on I Street, there's two redundant lines. There is a two inch PVC and then also another AC line. So we're going to replace that. We'll also be replacing some fire hydrants along there that are older or undersized. And that will also give us better flow off that 10 inch. And then later on, in future years, we would continue out south, the Corvallis Road section will carry on that project because that's old steel pipe and it's only four inch. That'll help the flow there later. And it's also like a cheese grater. We're constantly going out there, doing repairs on it. So that's coming up to extend that project.
All right. So $175,000 for that water line that Ken was talking about. Project number five is the Well Field Joint Pilot Test with Monmouth. We have $35,000 program for that. This project has been under development for a long period of time here. I'll jump back and so you can kind of see where it is. This is a south of the bridge, kind of behind these homes off the Corvallis Road. And kind of in the old railroad alignment down there. And there were three wellheads drilled a long time ago, I think back in 2008. Or maybe even before that. And those kind of sat there for a long period of time. And we've been working on a joint project with Monmouth to figure out what the best way to utilize those wells are in the long run. We're trying to figure out what treatment option is the best currently. They're looking at filters for that and trying to figure out just exactly what production we can get out of those wells and rehabilitate those. So that's a joint project. We don't have a whole lot of money allocated for, a lot of the money was invested a long time ago. But we know that there are some issues in the wells in the bottom of one of them. And one of them just has never been a very good producer. So just lots more to figure out there. And we'll, we'll spend the next year kind of working with Monmouth on trying to figure out how to best utilize those wells in that particular location. Item number six is the Polk Well Field, and that is a new well that's north of town. So jumping all the way up to the sports park there in this area. And this well is located right over in this area. And this well is under development. I think you saw, maybe I should have stayed there a little bit longer. But $490,000 in order to finish developing this well. There's some design work and, and development that needs to happen and connections, power, all sorts of things, getting it out of the floodplain. But this well is turned out to be really highly productive and gives us some really good water. And we're hopeful that this well will, sorry, I'll come back to that. Will give us enough additional water for five to 10 years. So it's money well spent as we have growth going on and other things. We need to continue to expand our water supply. And this well right here should do that. So here's a picture of the wellhead pointed back towards the apartments. And is something that we're going to get great value for. As that gives us a fairly good intermediate solution while we figure out the south well field or other options to, to, to provide water for the city. So this project has been under development for kind of the last couple of years with test wells and, and other things. And we've had some great partners and so far that's gone, gone well. I, I threw this picture in, sorry about that, because I was just doing it at the last minute. But I wanted to show you those Leland Cypress's that I was talking about earlier out there at Sports Park. So you can kind of see them. They just got planted here this last week. But there's, there are some of them for you to see.
Tom, is there, if I say something on that?
Of course.
So on those Lelandi Cypress, so those were planted nine foot on center. And within two to three years, those could be touching. So they expand very well as long as they have adequate water, which the farmer has adequate water out there. So.
All right. So moving forward. Item number seven is a master plan update. We haven't done the water master plan for a while. So I mentioned we were doing the sewer this year. Our plan next year is to do the water and the storm. And like I mentioned, one of the reasons I'm not doing all the out years is because we're getting these new master plans in place. And we can talk about all the projects that are out there, but they're probably going to change and move around in priority as we have professionals come in and study these. Typically our master plan updates come from our system development charges money. So that's not coming from the fees that, that most people are paying from, just so you know. Item number 13 is a water quality pilot study and implementation. Um, this is a small project that, that wouldn't have been in the master plan because it's kind of come up over the last few years. We, as Ken mentioned, you know, we've been having some issues with our copper pipes. Um, we haven't had any, you know, issues with copper or anything, but we've definitely seen some deterioration of the pipes quicker than we would like. Um, and we're, we're fairly certain that's due to pH issues. And so we have a consultant that we brought on board to do some studying of that. The next year we'd probably be implementing solutions to that to balance the pH of the system out. Not an extremely expensive project, but it is an important one. Um, and so we've added it to the CIP just uh to make sure that we continue to track it. Uh, water treatment facility control system, we have ten thousand dollars in here. And uh probably the next year, we'll probably have uh a lot more. Um, I think we have fifty thousand program for that particular project next year. Uh, this is really our SCADA system. Um, every city big and, and small these days has a SCADA system because we can't have operators on twenty-four seven. Uh, we need to be able to control things remotely. We need to be able to turn pumps off and on. We need to know when things go wrong uh and there's alarms on systems. Um, and so those uh control systems are very important. Um, Independence was an earlier adopter of getting the SCADA systems in, but our SCADA system is way out of date. Um, and is becoming a liability. So we're going to be studying that on the water side uh this year. Um, and then working on a program to update that uh system here in the near future. Um, and that's a project that we probably should have started a number of years ago. We just uh didn't, didn't have the bandwidth um to get to it. Uh, item number fifteen is a public works facility improvements. Um, so our public works facility is, is way too small for the community that we have. Um, and it is uh very old. Uh, I don't know how many people have you been over there because it's so cramped that um there's hardly room for our employees. We had extreme issues during COVID. We had to dislocate employees from that area multiple times just because we couldn't keep them six feet apart. Uh, we couldn't keep uh them safe in that facility. Um, and so what we've been doing over the last few years and what we're completing, uh continuing to plan to do is to put money away um for the purchase of property and ultimately uh a new facility there. We're not sure if we'll be able to buy a facility that's already done, that can be retrofitted for public works. Um, uh use or whether we'll build something new. But unless we have some monies in order to purchase a property or do something, we're always just going to sit here talking about it and um we're going to end up uh not being able to do the things that we, we need to do. So this is really um talking about improvements and we might do some improvements over there. One thing we're talking about is maybe getting a modular uh trailer in um for the short run so that we can actually uh make sure that we have adequate uh space for our workers. But um you, you should also go over there and visit it someday. I think you'd be surprised. Uh, it's uh, it's in pretty poor shape. Um, so uh we're just trying to put money away from, for that. And then uh ten thousand dollars, um I won't go to it again because you've seen it uh already um a couple of times, but it's the, the water line. Actually, I will go to it. So the water line from the F Street Bridge. Um, so we, sorry, I jumped around really quick here. I apologize. We saw this before. This is the F Street Bridge project. Um, and I showed you uh that water line underneath, but I was able to get another picture of that today. So this is the water line that needs to get replaced. Um, it's not, it's adjacent to the bridge, it's lower to the bridge. And so obviously if you have water that rises up to it, there's a significant risk. So that pipe will get tied to the bridge as well as uh put in a location to, to make it much more um uh sound uh in the future. So sorry, I'm, I'm standing in Inspiration Garden here looking um kind of northwest, I guess, at the, at the bridge there, just for your relocation. Sorry, I've, I've done these slides a number of times. So if I'm jumping around too quick, just, just let me know. You're doing great. All right. So uh Storm, uh actually before we went to Storm, were there any other questions on water? All right. So Storm, uh Storm is this, is a fund that doesn't really have much uh money in it. Uh, that's pretty true for every city. Uh, and so we have been saving up for a while this fund, so we can do uh some stuff. Um, uh, you, you probably saw it there when I was looking at the water. But uh the F Street, F Street Bridge Replacement Project, um as I mentioned, had multiple sources. Um, there's a large pipe that comes out here. That's actually not what needs to be improved on the project, but because we're adding asphalt and we're adding surface area, we need to provide water quality um for that as well as we have some storm connections along uh the F Street Bridge that need to get tied in and um and worked out. So that uh, that is a storm contribution to that project. Um, Storm System Annual Operations and Maintenance. Ken, you want to talk about what you guys uh do there on the Storm System?
Sure. Uh, so with this money, there's several different things we can actually use it for. Um, sometimes it could be going back and doing some uh ditch clean and some of our, our bigger swales that we have throughout town, but more so this money is used in areas that we don't have any storm implemented. Uh, when we started charging a storm fee, we literally got phone calls at least once a week saying, hey, I want to catch basin out front of my house because I'm paying this fee. So we started looking at all the different areas throughout town that don't have storm or that need storm updating. And then we would go in and we'd put a line in or upgrade the line or broken line. And we'd use that for that type. So uh right, like right now, this year, we have a few different neighborhoods where we're going to go in and do maybe a half block of storm improvements, which will help quite a few houses and try to spread that around town. So we're not just doing it in one location.
Stormwater Master Plan, item number six. Um, again, just another master plan to make sure that we uh are keeping up to date on what we need to be doing around the city. They'll be looking very carefully at uh any deficiencies in the existing system. Um, Stormwater Master Plans tend to be less about development than they do uh are about existing issues in your system. Um, whether they be just capacity issues or water quality issues. Uh, but also, you know, um, there are some environmental issues you need to be really looking at when you're looking at um stormwater uh issues and Ken talked about um TMDL and he'll talk about it here again in a minute, but we really need to make sure that we're meeting the state and federal requirements. And so it's, it's a different kind of master plan, but it also is very important uh that we can, that we, we look to, to do that. Um, item number eight. It's back. There it is again. Um, so yeah, so a sweeper, uh big expensive project. Um, but uh we think it's well worth uh getting uh done. And then finally, um, Ken is good to talk about uh the water quality improvements in the TMBL program here. So for item number nine.
Okay. So in regards to this, and it says MS four. So basically, when a city becomes uh the population of ten thousand or more, there begin to be more rules set for stormwater and um that's just so many more rules, so many more things to implement. We've already been working on a TMDL program and that stands for Total Maximum Daily Load. And basically, I'm going to read this to you just so you have an idea of what it talks about. A TMDL is a calculation of the maximum amount of pollutant that a water body can accept and still meet the state's water quality standards for public health and now and uh healthy ecosystem, ecosystems. Um, with that being said, uh, we're already doing this program in many different ways, working with Lucky Mute uh watershed. They'll do some rehabilitation along streams and whatnot. Where we put little emblems on our stormwater catch basins so that people don't dump oil in them and we get these pollutants. Uh, so uh we do uh the dog pet, uh the dog stay uh waste stations. That even helps, believe it or not. Those are all things that tie into this TMDL. When we do hit ten thousand, we're going to have to have training on it. We're going to have to implement more things and then uh we're going to have to be looking at things like more uh setback requirements for unnamed and named tributaries along Ash Creek. Uh, that sort of thing. And even like that sweeper, it's more so for, yes, we want to uh sweep the streets, make them look nice because it does, it does a great job of that. But also the, you know, in, in talking about this, uh counselor corps, looking back at the notes on the eco uh infusion. That's going to help by having less air uh pollutants and less water being used that don't go in the catch basins because they're going to start looking at us and seeing what we're doing to stop those pollutants going to those rivers. And it's due to, you know, the environment, whether it's fish or temperature or whatever. And that's also, the TMDL is all, is through DEQ and that's actually part of our permit that's going to be coming up and talking. We have mercury decisions that we have to talk about and, and in regards to our uh, our wastewater discharge permit. So there's going to be, with our size of our city growing so rapidly, we're going to be spending more money probably in that water quality section of it.
Yeah, and Council probably remembers I sent you a letter, um, I think a couple of weeks ago from, from I think it came from Morgan DEQ, but it really was based on the EPA's recommendation for mercury. And this money would go to making sure that we have that plan in place um next year, which we're required to do uh to make sure that we're meeting those tax and total maximum daily load requirements. Um, those are, you know, those are hard to measure. You can measure them coming out of your sewer treatment plant really easily. But these non-point sources, it might be coming into some catch basin that's ending up in Ash Creek are really hard to track. Um, and so, you know, we have to do the best job that we can in order to make sure that we're meeting those requirements. And this money would go to helping us get the, not only that mercury in place, but all, all the other pieces that we need to as well.
And especially because we're a river city and that's our, you know, that's our big thing here. So.
All right. Questions on stormwater before we move on? Alrighty. Sanitary sewer, everybody's favorite topic. I don't have a whole lot of projects here um that we're going to point out. Uh, you probably know that we spent a tremendous amount of effort um on our sanitary sewer program here over the last uh couple of years. Um, we have completely re modeled and uh improved the River View uh pump station. Uh, we probably all saw that project going on, but that was a, a very large project that uh made significant improvements to a, a aging infrastructure that was a real liability. Um, there were the wet well uh which stores the sewage in there was not big enough. Um, the pipes going out of it weren't big enough. The pipe, the pumps weren't uh up to date. Generator wasn't uh good. And so um that was a big maintenance project that, that happened um over uh the last year. And the other really big project that um we've been working on is the um the recycled water use facility project. And that is a project that allows us to be able to contain all of the um sewage in the lagoon through the summer months. Uh, during the summer months, we are not allowed to release anything from the lagoon, any effluent from the lagoon to the river. Um, and so we basically have to store all that water for many months. Um, because uh like Ken said, we're a river city. Um, not only do we care about the environment, we're also required by the state to make sure that we aren't uh doing anything that would um increase the temperature in the river, uh which can kill um fish or uh release uh any uh type of uh material that, that would uh prevent them from, from getting oxygen. So um, so that has been a big project. Uh, along with that project, we also updated the Williams Pump Station. That's a a much smaller pump station, the River View uh pump station. But those were very, very large projects. Um, recycled water use uh facility project basically allows us to um rather than making more lagoons, allows us to take the, the cleaned effluent uh from the treatment of that and put it um on farmers' fields who uh then can get a better crop uh for that, especially those that are doing grass. Um, they need uh water late in the year. Especially July and August. And so it's a win-win for both the city um and the farmer. Uh, so we we can't do that. We, we were having significant issues with DEQ um over that and uh uh because we weren't able to contain all the water in our lagoons uh due to just the amount of uh demand that we had. And so uh we had a number of years where we were releasing to Lambeth before uh October first, which is um not allowed uh under our permit with the state. So that should solve that problem. Um, but uh since we've done so much uh the last year, um our project list for this year uh is, is, is fairly small. Um, I mentioned to you that we were going to be looking at the water uh treatment facility can uh control system. We're also updating the wastewater treatment facility control system. We were able to do some major portions of that with the um the both the River View pump station as well as recycled water use and the William Street. So we've gotten the end pieces of that done, but we still also need to update the control systems um in the offices. And so that money is allocated to basically SCADA um in order to get that uh up and running properly. Um, we have, I, line item number seven is just our annual operations and maintenance. It's uh pretty expensive on the wastewater side or the sewer side. So Ken, do you want to kind of talk about what that entails?
Sure. So uh some of the things that we need to do in our uh wastewater permit, one of them is a yearly INI report, which is uh infiltration inflow of, could be rainwater, stormwater, you know, could be leaks in laterals from homes. But we still have our own mainlines that are getting older, that were concrete, where the joints are separated or there's cracks or reverse grade and they get plugged. This money will allow us to go in and if we've got a shallow enough place and we can excavate the site and dig the pipe in, it's cheaper. And then in some areas where it's deeper, more cost efficient, we'll go in and basically put kind of like a sock liner inside of the pipe or pipe burst it to where they put a new pipe inside the old pipe. So what we can use this money for is a couple, two, three, four blocks, depending on how deep it is and what we need to do, which, which way we need to go. That's the money that we work toward. Um, in addition to that, um, we can do manhole repairs for INI. And then at the end of the year, we could tell DEQ in our report, hey, look, we've done this much money. We've worked on our INI. We're trying. And INI is a problem that every city has and you can't ever get rid of it. But you, you really need the numbers to go down and DQ wants your numbers to go down. And the other thing that this helps uh in doing these types of uh maintenance things, you know, like the liners and whatnot, with helping that INI getting less of it, you're putting less in your lagoons for your storage. And our storage is already over capacity. Basically, that's why we're doing the spray effluent project. So with that being said, if we cut back in INI, that helps us a little bit in our, in our uh lagoon containment. Um, and like I said, you'll never get it, but uh you could be at seven, eight hundred thousand gallons a day of influent at our sewer, sewer lagoons. And in the winter on, you know, rainy season stuff, we could be at three million. So that kind of tells you, you know, what happens with INI. And it's a constant battle. It really is.
It's very, and it, it's, it's kind of like running around uh putting your finger in little holes and, and pipes all over the place. Um, you know, some places will spend millions of dollars trying to control their INI. And uh, you know, they have limited success. You're better off to, to try and find the point sources where you're having it, whether it's a bad manhole um or a line or a cross connect uh where you've got a storm line connected into your sanitary line. Um, and deal with it that way. But it is fairly expensive and time consuming. So that's why you see uh a fair amount of money uh going into that. We also have just lines that break in services and all sorts of other stuff that, that happens throughout the year as well. Item number twelve is updating the SCC rate and fees. Uh, I've kind of talked about this before, but this is the tag on project to your master plan. You do your master plan first, you identify all the projects and then you go back and figure out how you um fairly uh distribute that cost for the growth related projects um through your system development charges. And then what you need to uh pay in fees to do that. Um, last uh time we did that was back in two thousand seventeen. We've referred to that report a number of times. Um, that was done by Steve Donovan. He did a, an excellent job on both our water and wastewater. Um, but uh you really need to redo those every five years. Um, because it's very important that you have those right because ultimately, um you know, you don't want to have large uh increases that we Increases that we come back to council and say, hey, we, we need you to raise people's rates. Uh, last time I checked, that's not a popular thing for counselors to, to be talking about. So we try to really stay in front of these things and we do these projects so that, that, that doesn't happen. Um, and, uh, so it's, it's money well spent. Uh, treatment plant, uh, facilities plan, I'm gonna actually drop there, um, to that location just real quick. That's project. Number sixteen and it's, uh, kind of, uh, in the north end of town, uh, or the middle of town actually, but this is really. Um, our lagoons. So, you know, in all their glory, this is where everything ends up. Um, you'll, you'll probably notice that it's certainly not at the lowest location in Independence. And that's because, uh, everything in Independence ends up in some sort of, uh, pump station that actually pumps it up to the lagoon. So it can be treated. It's the same in Monmouth. Um, we're a river city. We're right on the river. Everything's super flat here, so you can't just have everything work by gravity. So. Not only do we have a lot of pump systems that we have to deal with, but we also have this four bay. Uh, lagoon system that, uh, we are using. Uh, earlier we mentioned that we worked on a really large project for, uh, flows. Um, that are over capacity and so that we were releasing early in the year to the Lam River. But we're also having issues with trying to, um, treat the amount of, uh, material that is. Uh, getting to our facility. So, um, we are struggling and, and not surprising this. So according to our consultants to keep, uh, within side our permit levels for, um, removal of. What's called biological oxygen demand and it's basically all the stuff that's in our sewage water. That, um, you need to take out before you release it to the river and the affluent and, and treat it. That's primarily through, uh, a bacteriological process. It just breaks that down. But you need to have it in there for a certain amount of time for that to work. And so really your only options are to go bigger, um, with your facility plan or to, uh, upgrade it. In order to make it work more efficiently. And so I think we already know what the answer is, but we need to do some. Studies and figure that out, uh, but we're probably looking at some sort of, uh, system where we are going to put in aeration. Which is just basically, uh, putting water into the lagoons or air, excuse me, air, it has plenty of water. Putting air into, uh, into it. So which makes the bacteria more active and breaks things down quicker. So that basically you don't have to expand your facility. I mean, really, once you get to the point where you're, you're, you're behind the curve, your only choices are, it's a big builder, bigger lagoons or build a. Full on, uh, sewage treatment plant, um, but sewage treatment plant is probably twenty plus million dollars. And so obviously we're gonna do everything that we can to keep our existing facilities working for the long run. And that's what we need to study to make sure that we, um, aren't, uh, continuing to trip up against the DEQ limits that are in our permit. Which aren't gonna get any easier, so. So that is what, um, that seventy-five thousand dollars is, is come of that facility plan to figure out, uh, how we can add, uh, air. And, um, get, uh, that plant running more efficiently. Uh, we also, this is an item that we primarily identified, um, during the. Uh, winter storms is we don't have enough, uh, generators for our sewer lift stations. And so what we do is we tow a generator from lift station to lift station, lift station, lift station. Um, to make sure that, uh, they're not getting full and overflowing. So, uh, we're gonna start working on a program to put permanent generators in at those sites. Uh, because that was a real problem, um, when we're going on. And then item number eighteen is a corollary item to, uh, the water. Um, that is to make sure that we have, um, adequate, uh, reserves in order to, uh. Expand, uh, the public works facility and, and make some temporary improvements along the way. So that's wastewater. I see everybody's yawning. I, I guess everybody's not a civil engineer like me and just loves this stuff. I was gonna say recovering civilians.
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead. No.
You mentioned, um, the, the bill that you mentioned, legislative bill. How would that, would that really upset the way we collect SDCs? Would it compromise some of the money that we have in this, this, uh, capital improvement plan that is coming in from F, SDCs to fund things?
You know, traditionally we've seen in the past, um. The bills that come through would have really significant financial impacts. Um, this particular bill would probably have some impacts, but. The problem is, is they're trying to change the timing of when you collect system development charges from right now. We collect those at. The building occupancy, uh, or not occupancy, we collect it when somebody pulls a building permit. And, um, that's a perfect time for us to collect it because if we actually need to go out and make an improvement. Then we have the money to go out and do that. And, you know, we're, we're kinda challenged because we have to make the improvement. Quicker than they could build a house, um, if you want it online by the time that the house is in place. Uh, it's also really important for the city because we already have those tracking processes in place. Um, and, uh, it's, it's, it's critical that we do it in a, in a, in an organized way. And it, SDCs are really complicated and I don't wanna get into it too much, but there's two components to an SDC. One is for improvement projects you're gonna do. The other is for projects that you've already got done. Um, and that growth is now using that capacity in the system. And so, you know, sometimes we'll have, uh, a loan out on a project and we need to get repaid. Um, and if they drag that out until, you know, um. You know, in, in some cases are proposing to drag that out until actually the closing day of. The sale of the property on single family residential houses. Well, we're gonna have to track that. We're gonna have to figure that. Some are gonna get missed. I mean, cause, uh, the title company might, you know, not see it. We don't really have an effective process to put a lien on, on the property at that point. It'll be extraordinarily costly, time consuming and be completely out of sync with when we actually need to collect the monies. In order to do these projects in an orderly manner.
Okay, I, I definitely get that. It would be like the city financing all of the, um. Projects that need to be done and maybe you're maybe not getting paid on time if at all.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
I did have a question and I don't know if this is for Tom or Ken. Um, I've had several people ask me about if the Willamette River in our area is safe to swim in. Safe for pets and safe for fishing and eating the fish. Can you give me an answer to that?
Well, depends on how good of a swimmer you are. Um, kidding.
Wait, waiting, you know?
Well, you do, you really need to be careful because there, the currents in that section of river can be dangerous. But as far as water quality, the Willamette River is really, uh, really very clean river. Um, and a lot of that is because of the, um. The efforts that we go to in other cities go to under what are, what are called our MS four permits. Which are, um, permits which were required. So when we release affluent out of our sewer treatment plant, that stuff is really clean. Um, and it is really well treated. Um, it's also, you know, been treated with chlorine, um, as well. Uh, so, you know, the only time you'll see issues are when there's something goes wrong and you're releasing a lot of. Material that isn't as treated as you would like to be and you'll see notices go up immediately from cities when that happens. Lot, most of the time those happens in large, large storm events where nobody's gonna be swimming in the river anyway. Um, uh, you know, I saw that in, in even just, uh, this, this winter in some cities, um, where. Uh, where, um, there was just a release of material from their sewer treatment plant. And there, they need to report that and make sure that it's, it's safe for people. I'm gonna pull you guys back over here a second actually to look at you, so. Um, so does that answer your question with it, but?
One more, the fish. Can they eat the fish? I, I had somebody that actually threw away his fish because he was, he had heard that it wasn't safe to eat fish. From the river. So I was just curious.
Can I jump in, Tom?
Yeah, please do.
First I wanted, I wanna go back in regards to the treatment. So. When we do treat the water and we do chlorinate it, we also dechlorinate that as well. So it's not chlorinated water going out. That is dechlorinated. So, uh, in regards to fish, it's kinda depends on your type of fish, like salmon aren't just living there, you know, year round and all that stuff. In regards to a lot of river fish, whether you're on the Bonneville or Willamette, it depends on what type of fish. If it's, um, like sturgeon. Per se, cause there are sturgeon on the land that you can catch out here. There's some good spots in Buena Vista or, or on the Bonneville. Those are more bottom feeders. So those are types of things that you need to watch out for, uh, some of the pollutants that they could get. So it just depends on when you're taking your fish, you wanna watch out for the browner portions when you're filleting them and whatnot. But the best way to talk about it is to go on ODFW site, ask them, because they'll even talk about like. Certain types of fish. You don't wanna eat too much of any, you know, you have a certain type of fish. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Cause there could be more pollutants that they could possibly, if they're a bottom feeder per se. Does that make sense?
Right. Yeah, it does.
Okay. Does that help?
Thank you. Yeah, it does help.
Okay.
Great question, counselor. Thanks for asking. All right. If there's no more wastewater questions. Uh, we will move to, um, parks. So last, uh, last item, uh, we include parks in our. Capital improvement plan. You'll see a couple of things, uh, in there as well, um, just that are large items. But really these five topics are the main ones. So, uh, parks, um, we have. Uh, going to the list. Um, Sunset Park, uh, is, uh, the first on the list and, um, you saw that back in the original. That I showed you from last year. And if you remember right, there was six hundred thousand dollars program for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-two. Um, clearly we don't have that much money, um, laying around to, to work on parks. And so our plan is to do, uh, somewhat very similar to what we did at, uh, Mount Fur Park or Inspiration Garden. And that is just to kinda do a little bit a year. Um, we did a, a fair amount last year. And, um, getting, uh, the grading done, the storm system in and the seeding done out there. Um, as well as the path, uh, but there are definitely, uh, other things that we can do. And I think Sean was gonna jump in here as well, cause Sean kind of really manages a lot of our, our parks projects. So Sean, are you, are you out there? Jason will bring him in. If not, uh, I'll, uh, I'll cover it the best I can. So item number one is Sunset Park.
Yeah, here I am, sorry.
Good. Um, so Sunset Park here, I'll go back is located, uh, you know, kind of in the south quadrant of, of our town. It's a, it's a very linear park that, um, goes between Chester and Maple Street. Um, and, you know, this was really just a grass field, um, until recently. And, uh, so, uh, put in, um, the path, uh, did the grading here. Put in some storm, uh, facilities and, um, Sean, what are we looking to do next?
Really, the, I think the next big thing is, uh, to put a playground in there, kind of ideally a playground with a little bit of hardscape for. Uh, you know, picnic tables and benches, you know, potentially a shelter. Um, that'll be kind of the next made, and, and really kind of the primary. In, you know, kind of improvement that remains there. I think we can definitely do some landscaping and, and some other, you know, kind of benches and, and rest areas along the way. Um, but really the, the big, I think, big ticket item that's left would be that playground area.
So here's some pictures. That's, uh, from looking right here, looking this way. Second picture will be from right here, looking this way. And the third picture is kind of up here, looking this way. So I'll just show you some pictures, uh, that I took earlier today. And grass is still getting established out there, but certainly, um, it's looking a lot better than it did. Um, uh, even just last year. So, uh, this is kind of a park. Uh, we're just gonna pick off. If, if we, we're not looking at a very extravagant play structure here, obviously at fifty thousand dollars. Um, yeah, but if we can't make that work, then we would probably move on to the next. Except the project, which is, uh, landscaping and, and your irrigation out there. So, uh, one way or the other, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll just keep, uh, moving on. With, uh, making that pro- park, uh, better. Um, so item number four, uh, independent sports field. This item actually came from. Um, the priority setting meeting that we had with council. Uh, it was clear that, um. Baseball fields and sports fields and, and other things are a priority to getting going. So, uh, we kinda talked to people and we think that, you know, forty thousand, probably at the most. Would get us some really good consultant services to go out and take a look at what are the possibilities? Uh, what type of fields, uh, could we put out there? Um, and what would make sense? So this is at the sports park, uh, north of town. Um, and so what we're really proposing to do is to say, okay, well, here's our existing soccer fields. Uh, what else can we do out here? What makes sense? What would baseball fields look like? What would more soccer fields look like? What would, what can we do with this area in order to move to the next step? Which would be, um, actually, uh, constructing something. So, um, that really came from, uh, what we heard from council. At the priority setting meeting. So, um, otherwise that wouldn't have been on the list, um, just to be honest. We, we were probably a few years away from actually getting that, but we moved that up, um, based on what we heard from council. Uh, let's see here, uh, River View Park, Master Amphitheater, uh, Master Play Amphitheater, River Frontage. Is during design twenty thousand dollars. So Sean, you kinda wanna talk a little bit about what we're doing at River View Park?
Yeah. So, I mean, obviously we've been investing pretty heavily up and down the riverfront with the park system there. Um, and the amphitheater is kind of the keystone, but, um, we did a, a new master plan for River View Park. Back in twenty eighteen, I think it was to reimagine that kind of the, the east side of the, of the River View Park. Essentially it's kind of that whole parking drive aisle area, uh, and where the, um, the playground is as well. Uh, cause really that, that parking area in particular was designed when, you know, and built when there was a boat ramp there. It was built for boat ramp park or boat trailer parking and that's not necessary anymore with relocation of the boat ramp. So the new design, um, idea is to connect the trail from the southern portion down there. Independence Landing or Independence Landing Park up to the northern, you know, kind of continuation of the Willamette River Trail up there. Um, and really to try to do it in a way that doesn't force you to walk down the drive aisle or through the parking lot of the, you know, dodging vehicles. So it need to keep you kind of in the green space, separated from, from vehicles, um, create better proximity to the river. Um, create high quality paddler's access, uh, because a lot more people are using the park to access the river. And yeah, Tom's circling that area right now. Um, you already discussed a couple of times the, uh, the grant that we've put in to design the paddler's access. That would be the vision for the location, um, is, uh, in, at the end of, in the end of C Street where the, where the old ferry used to be. Um, but the idea would be to put paddlers access there, pull back the, um, the parking lot a little farther to the west. Um, and fatten out the drive aisle a little bit to allow parking kind of along that way. Um, the design, the rough design actually retains essentially all of the, the parking that is already, uh, enabled there. So we wouldn't really be losing much of anything in the way of parking, but we'd be expanding green space, um, just creating better access to the river. Um, so like Tom said, we've, um, we already did actually try to put in one grant to fund construction of the. Or reconstruction of the parking area. Um, unfortunately, we're not successful in that, but if we can get the paddlers access going. Um, you know, a lot of these grants, it's kind of a domino effect. Once you get funding for one thing, you can leverage that into more and then leverage that into more. Um, so it's just kinda to see where we can get it going, but the funding really, you need to kind of get, get your designs to a certain point. To really demonstrate that you are kind of ready to, ready to do this, um, and that you're serious about doing it, um, when you, when you apply for the funding. So that's what's being plugged into the budget for, for this year.
And we're, we're not a hundred percent sure how we're gonna spend that, but we know that, you know, when we have these grant opportunities, we either have to have some matching funds. Or we have to be able to demonstrate, you know, certain things. Um, and so we're, we're trying to just make sure that. Um, we can continue to be in the cycle for that. We understand that to make significant improvements out there is gonna have to come from a grant. Uh, you know, or for some other funding. And so, uh, we're just trying to prepare, prepare for that. So. And since we're in River View Park, I couldn't not show the two Osprey that were there today. So, um. So there they are, sitting on top of their pool, um, looking very, uh, very chill. Um, so there they are, sitting on top of their pool, um, looking very uh, very chill. All right, so, um, sorry, uh, didn't mean to go that way. So that was Riverview Park, uh, poolhouse improvements. Um, we are have had some preliminary designs done at the poolhouse. Uh, we're starting to say, okay, we need to probably uh polish those off and and do a little bit more there. Um, we're not certain, you know, uh, if this is the right amount or too much. Um, but we certainly want to uh, have the ability to figure out uh what we need to do there in the long term. Um, that facility is is uh well, the, we've looked at the roof lately. I think that speaks uh volumes for it. Um, I I didn't get any pictures in here for that, but the the facility is really, really struggling to uh, to to stay uh, standing um at this point. So it's not that bad, but it certainly is is uh need some assistance, so. Uh, so Mountford Park, uh Inspiration Garden. Um, Ken can probably talk about this. As I mentioned, uh what we're trying to do on Sunset Park is just do a little bit each year. Um, we've been doing the same thing at Mountford Park. We're getting to the point where um, we're lowering the mount. Well, we have forty thousand allocated for this year. Uh, next year, we only have twenty thousand plugged into the budget. The year after that, only ten thousand, because we're getting to the end of uh what the city probably needs to do at that location. But Ken, do you want to kind of talk about what uh, what's on the schedule for this year?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so as Tom said, the path work we did over a few years, it's actually finished now. I don't know if any of you have been out there to see it, but it's great. They're doing a great job out there in the garden. It's actually beautiful out there. Um in regards to the next uh step for this coming budget year, uh we talked to them in some steering meetings and uh joined with them and asked them to come back with prioritizations of things that they want. And they wanted to do more than this, but I said, you know, it's it's kind of a lot, because we have to spread this out throughout the park, since we don't have any revenues. So they came back with a list. And what the first thing is, is to get power to the park, which we're gonna have to come off Becken Road. We'll probably have to do a bore trench in power. So there'll be a power contract with uh Pacific Power. Then we'll put in a uh panel for electrical, so they have electrical use um at their greenhouses and whatnot. Uh, from there, they'd like to put in um a a light for security and then some uh cameras. And then in addition to that, the last portion of the money, they would like to spend some money to do irrigation design work. And uh, they were talking about doing irrigation just on its own, but I suggest having the power first and go in that phase, so you have power for your irrigation and whatnot. And to try to get the design done, so then they know what, how much money they need the following year or two to actually implement getting, you know, that process done. So those are the things they're gonna be doing. They're gonna be, we're gonna be helping them get power to the site. Couple of power boxes, surveillance cameras, a little bit of lighting, and then design for the irrigation system throughout the park.
And then finally, uh, we have the skate park. Sean, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, this one's been going, you know, for a while. Uh, honestly, it was was making some pretty good traction. And then COVID set things back a bit. So we've kind of had a number in the budget for a while, um, just kind of hoping to be able to contribute to this. But, you know, optimistically, um, we, the the group is getting some pretty good donations. They've gotten all the rebar donated. Um, they just got a good, good commitment on the uh concrete at a very uh affordable price. So things are definitely coming together. It's it's a little unfortunate. Um, the, they've got enough now that if, that, you know, Monmouth is is uh is budgeting some some money, some money as well. And in a normal year, we'd be able to put in for a pretty sizable grant that might actually be able to do this project. Um, but that grant program has been kicked back a year, so we won't be able to apply until uh until about this time next year. Um, but it's on a good path. Um, and I think it definitely is still worthy of a of a kind of shared contribution here.
Yeah, this, uh, you know, one thing I should mention is just because it's in our capital improvement plan, doesn't mean we're gonna spend the money. Um, we're really frugal on making sure that um we're making smart decisions through the year. Uh, but one of the things is, is if you're using any development charge money, if it's not in your capital improvement plan, you can't spend the money on it. And so we tend to err on the caution of putting more in than less. And then um, you'll see that every year um, we never spend the amount of money um in these funds. We're always being um under the we probably spend closer to the amount in the uh parks fund, but the other funds, we're we're really careful on. And I I say that because this fifteen thousand dollars has been in all three fiscal year budgets since I've been here. Uh, we've never spent it. It just kind of just keeps bouncing down from year to year. So um, so uh, we try to do that as much as possible. So that's parks. Any questions? I promised to give you a lot of information. Oh, we had one more part. Uh, I'm sorry. I meant to zoom in on Inspiration Garden, so I didn't do that when we were talking about it. So uh, this is Inspiration Garden. Um, it's a right near where the S Street Bridge project starts. And um I think you've all seen it, but here is some visuals uh from earlier today. So uh, that's the garden there, the garden house. And if you need some inspiration, um, you need to go out to Inspiration Garden, just take a look at this uh, this guy here. He was out there just exercising, because he uh needed to. And uh, you know, we've been putting this path in over, I think, the last four or five years. Um, but you know, here's an opportunity for someone to get out and to uh, you know, do what they need to do. And that guy was working a lot harder than I guarantee any of us did uh today. Um, but making good use of the path and uh, and definitely enjoying the area. So um yeah, sometimes inspiration comes in all sorts of ways out there. I was uh, I was a little humbled by watching him to work out today, so.
He's out there frequently.
Yeah, so uh, that is parks and that actually.
Parks.
Well, good.
I'm sorry, just a quick question. So do we have to wait until June or July uh, to begin spending the money on the consultant for the sports park development?
Yeah, we would. Um, so uh but you know, there's a process in order to get someone on board as well, but we're we're a government entity, so nothing happens super quickly, because we have to follow the state laws uh related to that. So um, we can't start spending the money, but we certainly can start working on getting them on board before that.
And can we start working on potential grants before then, or do we have to wait?
No, anytime. Anytime grants seem available, we're working on those. Um, and then the matching funds would catch up, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So that was probably a lot more than you're used to and maybe more than you wanted. I'll let you guys give me some feedback on capital improvement plans, but it's it's really important to us that you guys have a really good understanding of what the projects are, because ultimately um, you know, as we go the next step and and really look at how you fund these projects, i- it's important that council has a good understanding of why we put system development charges in place the way that we do. Why do we put fees in place the way we do? Why do we spend so much time chasing grants and trying to find, you know, outside monies to do these projects? And um, you know, there's a tremendous amount of great work that goes on uh in in public works uh over the years. And the work that they do, and I, and I think people think a lot that it's just, you know, them uh maintaining things and keeping things clean and, you know, being there for all the events that they do. But there's a lot more to that. There's a lot of projects that um, that we don't talk about enough, that uh are really critical to making sure that uh, our residents have the systems they need for today and for the next twenty years and beyond. So um, I I wanted to make sure that especially the new councillors had an opportunity to really get uh down into the weeds somewhat and and take a look carefully at kind of what we've got coming up.
So council members, if you have additional comments to make, Tom, I'm sure he'll uh be glad to to take those in the next several days and reminding that we'll all see this as part of the budget. When it comes uh, comes in front of us, there'll be a whole capital improvement section where uh, where we get to read. Sound good? Thank you, Tom. It was a good presentation. Okay, so we're going to move forward, if that's okay with everybody. We're going to uh go to an executive session here. We're going to, we're now going to end the work session. And now declare the work session over. We're gonna go re-reconvening the regulator session. And we're going to go to an executive session for the purpose of discussion, real property negotiations. Okay? All right, I get to read my official piece of paper. The Independent City Council will now meet an executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transactions. The executive session is held present to ORS one nine two six six oh two E, which allows the council to meet an executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the sessions as previously announced. No decision will be made in executive session. This time, the council will recess for the duration of the executive session. Once the executive session is adjourned, we'll return to an open session. Any decisions from the executive session will be deliberated at that time. Without objection, we're gonna go to the executive session. Okay, we are now back from executive session, and I think there is some action that would like to be suggested uh by a member of council, who is going to do that one?
I will take that. I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate the sale of the old museum site property with final approval of council and after necessary public notice and hearings. Did I get anything in there?
I have a motion, Mr. Pestmer. Is that uh, uh, does that fill the need that you need?
Yeah, I think I would just clarify to say, accept offers and negotiate. So that would be great.
Okay, I so uh adjust my motion.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there a second, please?
I can.
That's second by Councilor Core. Is there a discussion? I hear no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. And is there opposition? I hear no opposition. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, council members, um, I didn't ask earlier, are there any announcements that need to be made at this point? Hearing nobody jumping up and down, if somebody will uh move to adjourn, we can finish tonight.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Have a pleasant evening. Good night.